Thank you for joining us this evening for the August twentieth, twenty twenty four, Montessorino Regular City Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to its council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the city, with the regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom, participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat to report only technical issues such as being unable to hear a company member speaking. Please use raise hand when recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. And lastly, when we're not all in the same room, it must be taken by roll call.
It is now seven oh three, and I am calling the regular meeting of the Montessorino City Council, August twentieth, twenty twenty four, to order. Let's start with the flag of allegiance. Councilmember Turner, I think, to lead us in the flag of allegiance.
I'm flagging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, just with the example of one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, just as our government.
While we do the roll call.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Present.
Councilmember Loggia?
Present.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Here.
Mayor Wolsheimer?
Present.
Thank you.
Any orders of the day? Mayor or majority council may by all change, change the order of business. If anybody wants to change the order. There's no question, so. Announcements. Councilmembers have any announcements at the time of the meeting? We've done. We'll move on to presentations. There are non-oral communications. If we receive any oral communications about any subject or anything on the agenda. Nothing?
And there's also no hands raised.
Written communications. Nothing. Then when you're moving on to the consent calendar, please recommend a little, all are inclusive, you all are active on simultaneously unless one of our council members wants to pull any items from the consent level. Does anybody want to pull any items? Councilmember Turner?
Yes, number two, the warrant list.
The other items?
I will abstain from items two and three. But if you want to go with, start with one, then.
We'll start with one and then do two and three together.
She's. Yeah.
Okay, in that case. First item is approved in August sixth, regular time council meeting. There are motions to approve these minutes back on public hearing. If there are, I see there's no, here's anybody in line who wishes to comment on item one, public consent.
You don't, no hands are raised for the public parts.
Okay.
Will they approve? I, I would like to second that, then. I'd like to say that on the future agenda items is councilmember McCutcheon stated the Financial Systems Ad hoc Committee, so I've got the change on here. But I will second that with the amendment. I accept that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Item one.
So which includes five, zero?
Five, zero, zero. Number two is, the warrant is dated August twentieth.
Yes, I have a question on item two, line seven, one, and two, line seven, five.
What's this? Seven, one, and two, nine, seven, five.
Yeah, and they're both two emissions square. Do we pay them twice a month?
I would have to get information back to you on that. I'm not sure. They're both the same amounts. But one of them says ending July fifteenth, twenty twenty four, and one says ending July thirty first, twenty twenty four. So I would assume it's bi-monthly for each payroll period.
See, the reason I'm asking is I don't remember seeing it twice in past months, so.
But I can look into that and get an answer for you. Ever question or remarks on that? I didn't. How do we proceed here?
Move to approve item two on the consent calendar.
Maybe Ray here, maybe Ray can ask, is he here?
He is not here this evening. But I will get the information for you. And if you wanted to abstain your vote for this evening, that would be one option.
And what you could do is vote to approve the warrant list subject to confirmation that it is not a double payment. And so that if it's not a double payment, it'll only get paid once. If it is a double payment, it won't get paid.
With that. Just a second.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Abstain.
Councilmember Loggia?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Mayor Wolsheimer?
Abstain.
What's your still carries? Three, zero, five, two.
Item number three on the consent calendar, accepted, traced for a report for the period ending March thirty first, same twenty four. And questions about that, I mean.
Move to approve item three.
What we.
I'll second that.
So anybody online who wishes to call on item number three?
No hands are raised.
Okay, was there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
Can you go a little call board again, please?
Councilmember Loggia?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor Wolsheimer?
Abstain.
And what's your still carries? Three, zero, two.
Public hearing. There are no public hearings. There is no unfinished business. We have new business, and that new business is consider and adopt a resolution canceling the November fifth, twenty twenty four general municipal election and appointing denominated candidates to the city council. I, can we have the staff report on that, please?
Yes, so, just a moment, you can take that. Okay, so at the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four city council meeting, the council adopted resolution number twenty four dash thirty nine, zero, nine, filed in November fifth, twenty twenty four, general municipal election, and requested that the county consolidate the general municipal election with a statewide, statewide general election. The municipal election is for the election of the two council members for two, four-term years, or years, sorry, terms. The initial nomination period ran from July fifteenth, twenty twenty four, all the way through August ninth, twenty twenty four. As of the close of the nomination period, we had Brian McCutcheon and Lisa Shannon file for the nomination papers, which were then reviewed by me, the city clerk, and, and determined to meet the requirements for submission. So at this point, since we have two seats and two qualified candidates, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution canceling the November fifth, twenty twenty four, general municipal election and appoint nominated candidates to the city council. You also have the option, though, of holding the election.
And questions about reports, council members? Just a couple of others, for valid statements also filed because nomination papers.
Or candidate statements?
Yes.
So they did, we had, we actually, I was pending with Brian on his, we were determining, but when we came down to only having the two, they didn't require it at this point, like we're gonna go off ballot.
Okay.
If I could comment, I believe, I know that I submitted my check for that.
Yes.
And since it wasn't required.
Yes.
Then I got my check back. It was not canceled, it was, or it wasn't cashed, so I, I received the check back.
Yeah, we just hope we can get some more information on the candidate, so. I don't know this kind of stuff. So do you have any other information on the other candidate, Lisa Shannon, who she is, or she doesn't?
We don't have any information, but the issue tonight is only, do you have the election or do you not? It doesn't change who the people are.
We want an election, so I don't wish it is. All right, so there was nothing, the other thing I just wanted, probably for a future agenda to start a discussion, because the time you ran, I mean, it's a good thing there's no election, it saves some money. But on the other hand, the question to the city, citizens' modesty, you know, what even, do what we do, because it's an unpaid position, no benefits or nothing. I was talking to some, some people at the picnic, and it seemed like if you give them some incentive to run, I'm going to give them a place for some nominal salary, we might be able to get more people, and that would be effective starting the term in thirty six, huh? Who, who gets elected in thirty six? I wanted to put that up, maybe in the agenda at some point. I I'm vehemently against that. I'm totally against that.
If, if you can, take a couple of comments, and then we can make comments afterward, because I have a question like to make, yeah.
Within, any other questions? And we'll take public comment at this time, seeing nobody here. Is there anybody online who has raised their virtual hand?
No hands are raised.
Okay, now we're gonna make comments, go ahead.
I hear what you're saying, Javon, and I'd like everyone to know that in Los Gatos, they had two candidates for two positions, and in Saratoga, they had two candidates for two positions. So it's not like it's Montisorino specific, and they do compensate their, their council members in both Saratoga and Los Gatos. And in my discussions with
There he is, okay, perfect.
So as I was saying, both in Saratoga and Los Gato, or sorry, Saratoga and Los Gatos, they had two candidates in each jurisdiction for two positions. And, and where they pay their council members in both Los Gatos and Saratoga, I don't think that's the reason why. In the year twenty twenty two, when we were looking for three candidates for three positions, I spoke with three other people, and their main concern was the time commitment. And, you know, fortunately, Aver and I are somewhat retired, and, and Burton, and, and councilmember Turner, and Javon, you, you can juggle your, your days, but for a lot of people, they can't do that. And, you know, I, I, I don't think it's the money.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just saying, whether you should put it in the agenda, I'm fully involved in it. I don't think we should get it discussed right now, because it's not really on the agenda.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see it on the agenda, and we can discuss it, you know, because there's obviously a difference, and it may or may not be more than here, agenda, and it's not for me, because I'm running against, or whatever, I was covered in twenty six. Okay, so that's what I request, we're in the agenda at some point. All right, and your comments about this item?
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt and consider and adopt a resolution canceling the November fifth, twenty twenty four, general municipal election and appointing the nominated candidates to the city council.
Just a second.
Question for council.
You probably should put cases.
Recuse or abstain?
Recuse. Sorry.
Good question. So it's been a day. It slipped for no less, sorry.
So if you don't, if you suggest, I'm sorry, I said, well, then we'd have to have an election.
We'd have the election, yeah, with those two people on the ballot, yeah.
But people could write in also at that point.
They could.
But, yeah, we just hope.
So we got, so, so right?
Because now, once you guys, if you guys were to move into a point.
Yeah, that'll be done, that'll be done. So slowly, you give everybody the channel, somebody to write in, yeah.
I have another question. So, um, we're gonna have a council that's a hundred percent appointed, is that okay? Are there any regulations to help us?
It's a very good point. I'm willing to do that, I have to check.
You have a question.
Create children in the nation that. I don't think it matters. So, so I actually, it doesn't, because they're not actually appointed, they are appointed in lieu of election, but it is, it is as though they were elected, so different than if you, somebody left a seat early, midterm, and you appointed somebody, that would be an actual appointment. So this is being appointed in lieu of election, so it's just as if you were elected.
So, thank you for. And they actually are aware that the last election, we had three, we, we had the same situation, so that the person I work with, now that you're saying that, yes, they are aware of that.
Yeah, but the last election, you had one year that was elected, newly elected. The coming year, you're gonna have all five.
All five will be, but it's as though they were elected, and so they aren't, yeah, they're typically appointed, as though they.
Legally, it's the same.
Right, exactly the same, yes, yes, yes. Sorry about that.
I had a lost guess at that question. Did I forget? So Campbell last year, even though they didn't need to have an election, they actually held an election.
Correct.
Just to get the right candidates, didn't forget you. So we have a motion already on the floor?
Yes, a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Go ahead. So who's gonna take it?
Take one.
Who's gonna second it?
I just.
You did?
Yeah.
I thought you said she could take it.
I think we need to do a roll call.
Yes. Okay, so we have councilmember McCutcheon refused. Councilmember Loggia?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yes.
We have, that's four, zero.
And with that, if you can bring Brian, I gotta enter the room. Congratulations.
We have a lovely pet for you.
Yeah, that's what you, Ryan. So that takes care of item numbers four on the agenda. So moving on to committee commission, so you're for it? Vice Mayor Craig?
Do you accuse herself? Sorry.
I'd like to hear your commission and committee reports.
I have nothing to report.
Also, I'm very alive. The city association was really getting involved with that BAFAP, you know, that great two-second special meeting you had where you, it was coming on Monday at two o'clock? We needed to give you a word for that, because that was the BAFAP resolution. And the BAFAP resolution, they decided they were not going to pursue it anymore. So they're not going for that bond fund, they have twenty billion dollars, and we should send them a special media we have to have for them. There was a lot of discussion, but apparently, the issue had to do with reducing the voting requirement down to fifty-five percent from sixty-six percent, or whatever it is now. And they didn't think they would get that together, and there were some lawsuits that were filed, and the court kind of ruled against the people filing the lawsuit with the same average average people, but they figured there was enough negativity going on that they would not get that bond measure, so. The city association had made an end of committee, and I made sure I didn't get on it, because I wanted this, I told them we need to have the smallest city represented as to who gets how much funding, so. So we made a end of committee, went to a special meeting, I think I sent an email to everybody on the, on that. The city managers in the special meeting, where all the city managers were there, and, and the subcommittee was about six members of the city association. So we had a good discussion, and while we were having that discussion, the BAFAP committee was also meeting, and they decided that that title, that it probably, well, I mean, not quite at that time, but it looked like they were not going to root for it. So they, they're going to cancel it. So one, one thing I suggested to them, and the, the problem we were having is we were trying to decide how much does each city would get out of the money which comes in, because San Jose would get a specific share anyway, the rest of us were going to fight over those terms. Yeah. I, I suggested to them that we do that before they post the bond. If you decide that the cities are either going to get based on their population, or based on the property taxes that they pay. From my, from our point of view, paying proportion based on property taxes would be better, because us cities, cities like ours are taking more property tax compared to what the people that live here. So we may make up for that debate at some point, but that's, that's the position that we should probably espouse. Yeah. Remember, the, the, the mayor of San Diego Valley Hall sent a letter to the board supervisors, asking them to, in advance, publicly, where the money would go. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about. All, all the mayors. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, you have a special meeting, so you could authorize you to do that. Yeah. So, that was, that's right, yeah, so, so we did our part. Yeah. Okay. All right. That's it. Councilmember Turner?
Yeah, I was, I'm a member of the Google group that actually objected to that.
Oh, good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, so proportionality would be important, because of money, whatever comes. But first of all, the bond is ridiculous, and the amount of time.
So we spoke actually at the meeting.
All right. Oh, one of the comments I had, that we didn't really get an accurate representation on how much it would cost us. I think the city manager said it was gonna be like five thousand dollars per million, and at one of the meetings, I was told it's only like thirty dollars per million or something. So I, I, I don't know what, where the real number is. But I think the opposition probably had the higher number, and the BAFAP people had the lower number, but I I couldn't figure out the difference.
So, can I, can I go next? I wanted to report on the West, the PIPAC, which is our sewage treatment facility, and I'm the representative for West Valley Sanitation District, West Valley Sanitation District, and Amel, Saratoga, Santa Clara County, which is San Jose and San, Santa Clara, and Los Gatos and Montessorino. So last week, they put before a master agreement with Santa Clara Water District, Santa Clara Valley Water District, for support services to the Santa Clara Valley Water Purified Water Program. And they wanted us to vote on this. And I voted no, because in the past, San Jose has a history of obligating tributary agencies like ourselves to pay for water supply, kind of like BAFAP, which does not benefit sewer rates for, for payers. All right, and furthermore, they have a history of leasing plant land at ten dollars per year, which is not fair market value, and return funds to the tributary agencies. So it's a losing proposition. So, they, it, it says there's no negative impact on, on us, but I said, but if you are gonna meet with valley water without us being involved, then San Jose City Council makes the choice. We'll, we'll vote on it, and we have no say, because we're not at the meeting, future meetings. I voted no, there's seven of us, and I was the only one who voted no. So this is typical of what happens with San Jose, Santa Clara, PIPAC.
Is that something the city association can get involved in?
Say that again?
Is that something that the city association can get involved in, but you've got other smaller cities of that association would be, who may be willing to join us on some of this time?
Well, we are the smaller, West Valley is small, right, there's Cupertino, that's not part of this. The problem with Cupertino is, is that they always rely on West Valley Sanitation District to make the move, because if we challenge them in, in court, they will benefit. So they always vote yes to them. That's like in Silicon Valley.
And what's that? Councilmember McCutcheon?
At our picnic on Sunday, you saw West Valley Clean Water Authority was there, as well, West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority was not there, but the Hauler was there, which is West Valley Collection and Recycling, and I thought they did a good job. The two, the, both the clean water and solid waste meet quarterly, so there's no meetings in, in August, but there will be meetings in September. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, I attended the study group meeting, but I didn't attend the board meeting, I had another commitment, but I was involved with the recommendations from the executive committee that were going to the board, so there's not really anything to report there. And I'm keeping the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee to the end, because I actually have something extremely positive to report. And the sum and summary is that I invited the CEO, Carolyn Gannatt, as well as Vice Mayor Matthew Hudes to come and experience beach traffic on Saturday. And there were, there were three people from BTA that were there, including Carolyn, and her senior traffic engineer, and her senior grant and funding person. And so the four of us rode in the truck, and Matthew was in front of us in his car, and we drove all over Los Gatos, and she got to experience beach traffic.
What, what time did you get to that?
We went from eleven fifteen to twelve fifteen, and then, this is ironic, that Carolyn lives in Alameda, so she had to drive down here, and we, we met at Cambrian Plaza Parking Lot. And I had mapped out the route that we should go on with the, with Chief Jamie Field, and she said, if it's high traffic, go here, if it's medium traffic, go here, and if it's low traffic, go here. And essentially, we were in a low traffic situation, because we were there early, and we went along Main Street, and we turned left onto South Santa Cruz, so she could see the entrance, so she, the, the people from BTA can see the entrance to Highway seventeen, right, the on-ramp. And then I drove back, and as we were going along Main Street, Carolyn said, oh, look, that's Park, Parkside Cafe. That's where I'm meeting my friend for lunch after this. So we went all the way back to Cambrian, and then ironically, she had to get in her car and drive to downtown Los Gatos, and she said that she spent over thirty minutes on University App. So she heard what the overview was, and then she actually experienced the frustration, so I don't want to get our hopes up, but at least it's on their radar screen, and we said two things. Matthew pointed out that it's not necessarily about inconveniencing the people in Montisorino or Los Gatos, but it has to do with safety, so he stressed the safety issue during the wildfire season. And then what I did was I stressed the fact that the people that are on seventeen and are doing the cut-through traffic, those people are not residents, those people are people from the jurisdiction. Those people are not residents. Those people are people from the jurisdiction, right? So if you can work at the problem, you'll solve it for other people, not just Monte Serrino and Los Gatos. And I also said, my other pointer to, to them, their team was that the. City of Monte Serrino and the town of Los Gatos will work together to, um, to. Or an integrated solution. So we're not doing something separate than what everyone else is doing. So. This isn't the, is, isn't the end. It's the beginning of, I think, what will be a, a process. But I was extremely impressed that the CEO of Valley Transportation Authority. Came and spent a Saturday morning with us. So.
Right. Well, let's hope something wonderful comes out of this. So whatever, whatever they end up doing.
I think what you did really, but I think it just really points out that everything that's done for San Jose, they don't understand that there's, there's. Serious problem here. I know it's a bit solved. But bar coming to San Jose is fine, but this is a bigger problem than bar to San Jose. And, and again, maybe the, I, I keep going back to city association, because we've got a good group. There's a lot of other cities who will be willing to help us out with this. Maybe we need to get the BTA out there to explain to us how to solve this problem.
Well, I, I don't think the BTA has ever been invited to, to really dig into it. And. And, uh, when we, we came down Highway nine, we went through Ridge Crest. I pointed out that. The black signs are Monte Serrino and the other signs are Los Gatos and you can see the county signs. And, uh, we went through on Ridge Crest. We came, it was, we sort of did a reverse, uh, commute there and then we came on to Highway nine. And we came down Highway nine and then we turned left onto North Santa Cruz. And, uh. The traffic was bumper to bumper from Highway nine all the way to Lark. Like we were going against traffic, right? So it was, and that was around, that was around eleven forty-five or so.
Good. So, so the other people who could help with this is the supervisor, uh, people who are in the supervisor election, in COVID, in San Diego. Or give other, that's really need to get Los Gatos and us to get together. Bring their own damage so that they can, Oregon has all the money, so.
Well, the, the person that's in charge of funding and getting funds, uh, she was the senior person. She's, she. Walk, she was with us and she was bouncing around ideas because there's programs that are across the state. Were doing different things and knowing what those are, are they, are they. I mean, Valley Transportation Authority has a six and a half billion dollar budget. And Carolyn explained what they do versus what Caltrans does. And briefly, uh. BTA has done all of the work as like the major contractor for Caltrans in the county here. For the last thirty years. So in other areas, it's Caltrans that's doing everything, but here they rely on BTA. Because they can do a project three years faster.
Well, the thing is, the BTA board itself, I think nine people or whatever number there is, four or five of them are from San Jose.
When you guys speak, can I have you guys closer to the microphones? It, it shows a microphone. We want to make sure that it's capturing. Um, so the audience is also able to hear a little bit more clear. So the more we talk into the mic, the, you know, the light will be a little bit greater.
Yes. So the BTA has got four or five members that are from San Jose, with one or two elected from different cities. So the other cities really don't have that much on, on the BTA. That's why we don't get the attention. So this is great. Because we're in the microchip started and I think you can get kale and, uh, uh, for the future supervisor with us. We might get some radio.
Thank you for that report. Um. Now the last one here on the list. Uh, we met with the mayor of Santa Clara County last Friday. And there were several topics. The, the major topic, the theme of the meeting was loneliness. How so many people in this area are lonely or feel lonely, they're enjoying all kinds of mental issues. Um, San Jose and Cupertino and Sunnyvale both have developed some major initiatives to address this. Specifically by organizing, uh, community, uh, centers, community meetings. They're sponsoring those financially also. For example, Cupertino has a hundred and forty-four. What they call block leaders who organize events in a certain area of the city. And Sunnyvale is doing the same thing. Um, San Jose has a lot of programs going on also. So. There were some interesting presentations. I will forward it, call me, uh, through the voice to everybody. Next topic was.
Did they say we have a lot of residents or depressed?
Not necessarily depressed, but loneliness can lead to depression.
Are, are residents that that's.
Yes. Yeah. While in Silicon Valley, Santa Clara County. The next topic that we discussed was, uh, artificial intelligence. On December four through six, there will be a major AI, um. Artificial intelligence in government, uh, conference. And I will send the registration information to everybody here. Um, all council members, all the elected officials are invited, uh, city managers are invited. Um, San Jose is probably the first so long because they have the most resources to address stuff like this. And they're, they have some very interesting programs going on already with regards to artificial intelligence. So. December four through six are the dates.
Where, where is the conference?
Somewhere in San Jose.
Oh, okay. So it's local. It's.
Local. Yeah. The next topic was very interesting also, Proposition thirty-six. I don't know if everybody's familiar with Proposition thirty-six. It's meant as a counter as a, or a rollback of Proposition forty-seven. Which was adopted by the voters fifteen years ago, which, um, addressed. Uh, mass incarceration. That was the intent. But, um, a lot of people feel that the pendulum was swung too far to one side and now. Proposition thirty-six is meant to bring it back. So, um. Prefer punishment, uh, for retail theft. Um, drug treatments, um, people get warnings a certain number of times and after that they will be. Encouraged to, to get treated, uh, things like that. So there, there's a lot of details on, uh, on Proposition thirty-six. I have to say that all present mayors, including myself, uh, expressed their support for Proposition thirty-six. Uh, which is interesting because I know this is a nonpartisan body. Um, but all mayors are Democrats at this point. And we all support Proposition thirty-six. And this is a very partisan proposition, I think. Or it can be, but nevertheless, um. As a, personally, as a voter and not as the mayor here, I, I strongly support Proposition thirty-six. And I recommend everybody to take a good look at it. Um, I also wanted to mention that the, uh, the elections in Los Gatos and Saratoga may be canceled. Just like ours here in the state of, as many candidates as seats. And Los Gatos is voting about it tonight and Saratoga later this week. Well, that was my report. Um, council member comments?
Uh, to, to supplementing your talk thirty-six, there are some bits that I already been asked, you know, complete that. But I usually want to do a follow-up with opposition, so that'll be just. Thank you.
Further comments?
Uh, just one quick comment. Um, on the June eighteenth and May twenty-first. Warrant list, we did pay Mission Square points. So. That's why I wanted to know that.
Mission Square, what, what, what are you paying them for?
Looks like it has to do with fund, the fund four fifty-seven. Um. Let me find the actual entry again. But it's something that's attached to the payroll.
So, so we are paying them twice every month, basically, just for a second.
Yeah, um, last month we paid or back in June, we paid them, oh, where is it? I didn't know. I was going to look this up. I just wanted to. Let me get this back to a, a font size that I can read. It's for the four fifty-seven plan. And we paid them thirteen seventy-three eighty-eight, which was the same amount as August. We, we paid them twice. And the checks were, were back to back. Now they're, they're under two separate accounts. I don't know how that works, but, um.
Yeah. So, so, so you need to be able to pay the pattern return. We are supposed to pay them twice. There it is. I'm sure you did it.
Yeah, it, but it coincides with the payroll.
I'm sure it's a correctable.
No, I mean, it's happened three months in a row now. I, I didn't bother going any further back, but. So it's something that's, that, that we're doing every, at every warrant list. And I think, and I've also seen it in the past too.
Okay, um, any other council member comments?
Oh, is it council member comments yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, at the picnic.
Uh, council member reports. Now we're on to the comments.
Okay, at the picnic, um, one of the residents came up to me and asked me if it was okay. To park his RV here at City Hall. And I said, I don't fix it. And he says, well, why is it then that we have so many cars here being parked? For residents around the area as a storage. And I said, I'm. I said, I don't know. I said, I don't necessarily, um, come by City Hall all the time. So I asked him to contact, um, maybe Loyce or, or Steve. Or city attorney to figure out, you know, if he can do it if other residents are doing it.
But, but were they parking an RV here?
Well, parking a car in general, right? Because there are so many cars here, he says, that are being parked. So he says, well, why can't I park my car? He said, I don't know. So can you check? I, I told him to call you. I forgot to get his name.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I haven't had anybody reach out, but you know.
Well, it just happened last.
Sunday. Is, isn't there a sign up there saying go away if you park it? Isn't there a go away sign up there? Yeah.
Well, it looks like, look, there's a car there now. It looks like it's being parked here for days.
So essentially what we do, um, is if somebody has a construction project. Or sometimes neighbors ask us to park or to have them a party, we get all kinds of requests. So if he reaches out to us about parking their RV, um, I'll talk to them. But the reality is if somebody wants to store an RV or a boat or something here, that's not permitted. Um, if somebody has torn out their driveway a couple of doors down and they parked their. Two cars in the corner. We try to be sympathetic because otherwise people park cars up in that Rose Avenue and that creates another problem. So. We try to be accommodating, especially to the neighboring construction projects and this.
Okay, I, I definitely know what it is. He was asking me if he could park his RV here because. He was paving his driveway. That's what it is. So can he park here? And I said, I don't know. And he says, well, a lot of cars are being parked here in Monteserino, uh, uh, to your home. And I said, okay, ask the city manager.
Can you do the right thing by telling them to contact us and we'll evaluate? We try to be accommodating.
Yeah. Depends on the size of the RV also, I assume, because.
Can create a safety concern.
Kind of take that.
Not on Tuesdays.
No, no, our result Tuesdays in any case.
All right. Any further council member comments?
Well, just, just one last comment. Loyce, thank you very much for a great picnic.
Yeah, no, great job.
Everybody seemed to have a really good time. The only suggestion is tell the barbecue guys to get about three times as many windows.
We actually talked about that. And this was definitely, uh, a bit different. Uh, but yes, we, we've already kind of. Are working on details to make it a little bit more efficient for next year.
Well, and, and it wasn't so bad except he was, it seemed like he had to explain the menu every single version. And then somebody would say, well, can I get like two, two, two blocks of cornbread and, and no bean, but just a little extra. But it, it was like, no, here it is.
But then he called and it was waiting for you.
It was delicious food recording something. I had, I eat, even the hot dogs. I had, I wanted to be to the, of the beef and the, and the chicken hot dog. They were delicious and it was good. The food was good. So that spot was really nice. I don't know why. I know we're not that far away from the water at our old spot, but it just seemed nicer having it real close. Again, and, uh. And maybe if people know that, maybe they'll take advantage and, uh, the, uh, facilities and maybe. Maybe we have a boat race or something next year. None of that.
We were also very fortunate with the weather. I mean, it's mid-August. It could have been a hundred and five, maybe plus high seventies. So. That made all the difference. Yeah, great job. Thank you very much for doing that.
Any police officers that jumped in the water, what do you call it? Divers and sea, seafarers or something.
Sure they have a police diver. Because I, I know that there's at least one guy who's a certified scuba diver and. Carries the equipment in his car and he's on call.
All right, we should do something.
Misturation, very. Emergency, how did we react? Actually, someone pointed out there was someone with a, some sort of sword. And so it was great to just walk over and tell our police officers. Um, but as soon as they came back, someone nearby the restrooms, um, the person had already kind of disappeared. I think they might have been like, uh. Wrong area to come with a sword. An area to come with a sword. Well, because we had, we had like Los Gatos police officers. We had a ton of them. We had a lot of people in uniforms. So they must have been like, uh. Maybe I don't want to show this off here.
Hopefully it was just to show them.
I hope so. They didn't stick around for, for us to see anything else.
All right. Unless there are any further comments, we will move on to city man's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback on the comments, uh, about the picnic. It was a great success. First year being in a new location, but I think the location sounds overall that is preferred to the old location. And having all five council members there was great. Uh, we did receive a thank you card from a resident. Uh, about how much they loved the picnic. And what I like about the card is. They said, awesome barbecue. We met neighbors, new neighbors too. So I think that's the whole purpose, is to build community, meet the neighbors and, you know. Discussion earlier, heard comments about loneliness in Silicon Valley. This is a perfect opportunity to. Get out there and be part of the community. And I think Cert was very active in recruiting. I think we have ten. I was told ten new members. We'll see what the sheet looks like. Sixteen, sixteen. That would be wonderful.
The mayor was very active.
Well, the mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
I basically walked along the food line.
With no escape there, right?
But, but, um, you know.
He said, you can't, you can't eat unless you're trying.
The reality is that is the time to get them when they're out and they're out there and they see what the community is and what the community offers, what the community can do. Um, it's really hard to reach people via emails or, you know, news blasts or whatever that we have, postcards even sometimes, but.
Our team is going to follow up with all sixteen people.
Well, it's, it's absolutely fantastic. So thank you all. What?
Gave us a pardon.
Well.
Can you, uh, give us?
I can share their names, their first names. I'll give you a hint. It's on Burton Street. Patrick and Diane.
History.
But I'll pass it over to you. And they also gave us an orchid on the table.
Yeah, so we wanted to share that, that something.
May I also ask a question about how did we do with respect to the budget?
For the picnic, we came in under the budget.
Yes.
What was the, did you have it off the top of your head, the exact how much we came in under?
Um, we saved over two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
We were going for that third food vendor, but be, because we couldn't get the proper permitting for them. Um, we couldn't get them, but perhaps next year we'll, we'll get that figured out. As well as the barbecue, breaking it into threes. I was, so the tacos were fantastic. The tacos always. I was, so the tacos were fantastic. The tacos always had a very short line. I mean.
I think people didn't know that they were open for business, so.
And I tried walking along the the barbecue line and say, hey, tacos over there, short line, you know.
We're gonna have Indian food.
They, yeah, they were gonna be providing us um, through also food truck. But literally the week of, like last week, they let me know that there. It didn't go through, so they wanted to move unfortunately because we had to go through a permitting system. Um, we weren't able to add that change in the application, so. They are great people. I definitely like to keep in touch with them. I let them know. They had great reviews. I looked them up. There are also, um. Folks on the list from the county that approved with all those, you know, uh, approval certifications and stuff. So I said, we definitely, you know, stay in touch for the following year because I think that, you know, having a little bit more diverse in the foods would be appealing folks. I want to say they're Indian Express. I can send you the name. Yeah, lovely people. They're expanding. Um, and that day they were actually scheduled for another event. Um, so that's why they were really in a hurry to try to get another, um. Food truck. So I think they're expanding. They're pretty good.
So the other thing is if possible, have some halal food, which is like kosher food, kosher meat. Because most of scanning to regular meat. So it's kosher meats that they can sell back. Which they're gonna get anywhere else. A meditative place is usually that.
Except for considerations the next year.
All right, again, great job.
In addition, you all have noticed the color of the building has changed. The painting project in this building is completed. Um, it was quite extensive. We replaced a lot of rotted trim around windows. They also found some standing water under the house and some other things. Um, or the, I call it the house, the site. Um, we changed out some signage, but we 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 covered a lot of little details, so it's nice and fresh and new feeling. But it was desperately needed, the exterior paint. So thank you for council support on that. I hope you like the color. I thought it was a color that people can agree on, white.
It's good. I like it. Did you mention you had a gopher problem here also?
There is a gopher uh, problem in the front lawn that's been around probably for a very long time. And um, what I believe we're working on. Is we're trying to coordinate doing some landscaping out front in conjunction with the clean water program. So we can meet our estate requirement. And also take care of the landscaping and probably do away with the lawn, put in ground tolerant plants with bark. And just make it look fresh, yet less water will be needed and probably the gophers will not be in a shit.
Yeah, so so we had a big over problem. We have a big over problem at our house. But the county sent somebody, he was very thorough. Basically told us that the trenches all around the the property and. Sometimes wire wiring on it, so the rest of them getting interrupted. And as he says, our houses are slowly sick. What they've done under the.
Our previous landscapers did approach it that way. They put like chicken wire in the lawn itself and as the lawn was sinking, but. Um, you know, the lawn itself is. It's just mowing and watering and edging and mowing and watering. It's a labor intensive and it's. It uses a lot of water, which water is a precious resource, so. We're thinking down the road to. Make the lawn go away. All all three patches.
All right. Was that your report?
That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
I forgot something. Um, I was contacted uh, last week on Friday. That, um. The town of Los Gatos hired a new city or town manager. And I'm not sure if you saw that, uh.
Yeah.
News release, so I might think it's important to have a good relationship with them, so. Uh, I believe he starts on fifth of November. So it was just something. I can't recall his name.
Saratoga has a new, uh.
Matt Morley.
He just came from Cupertino. All right, um, future agenda items. We have one already.
Right.
Uh, talking about the election procedure.
And and we can schedule that. Uh, what's the new color?
The other, I'd like to mention one thing, um. October first this year is on a Tuesday, which means that our first meeting out in October will be on the first and our second on the fifteenth. We canceled the November fifth meeting, sort of means there's five weeks in between council meetings. Between October fifteenth and November nineteenth. We may have to call a special meeting in between. Well, I'll take a look at. The agenda if it's necessary, but. Uh, I'm I'm not a, um. I don't favor usually special meetings, but if we have to, we'll do it.
I'm not here to leave the. For sure.
Yeah.
Um, when we were talking at the last meeting about the uh, Cal Cities Conference. Um, it is after our second meeting in October. That's why it worked out really well. So I I did notice that, that it's very odd to have a thirty one day month and have the first Tuesday. And then and then have the November meeting canceled.
Right.
So putting the new members on. Seeing the new members is gonna be. The first meeting in November, November, whatever.
In December. Just like. Uh, depends on the election, when the election results are ready to be certified, so I think that meeting is also a little bit early, so.
Okay. And and I probably will be here for the next meeting, I think. But I may try to prove myself. Would you be glad I could give you an address, I guess?
Okay, any other suggestions for future agenda items? If not, we will move on to.
I think, Tim, would you like to open a pu- public comment on the public, uh. On the subject of public employee performance evaluation, government head section five four nine five seven, uh, title city manager.
Anybody online, uh, wishes to comment on this, uh, subject? To be discussed in the closed session. If so, please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
In that case, we will now move on to the closed session.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. The council has returned from its closed session about public employee performance evaluation and there is nothing to report from this session. And we will therefore reconvene to open session now and since we have nothing further on the agenda, I will close the meeting of the Mato Grosso city council at 9:27 PM.